Six thirty, we'll call a meeting to order. Can you start with the budget regions, please? All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
Uh, we do have one addition. It's the agreement to accept biosolids contract with the city of Lester Prairie. Um, our thought was to have it on the consent agenda, except if you want discussion on it, and we can do that as well. Um, it's just a standard agreement that we have with the city of Lester Prairie for our biosolids every year, the transfer of biosolids every year.
I would write, you know, it's writing up, maybe we can put it down at seven, eight, ten. Um, I suspect it'll be a brief discussion, I think in fairness to more people review it. Anything else, any other additions? We've got a little promotion to approve the agenda with the one addition of the biosolid contract, biosolid contract. Motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion, second, I'll appear and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll open up for public comments, if there's anyone who would like to address the council with anything that's not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close up comments, and we'll move to the consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be removed for further discussion? Hearing none, a little promotion to approve the consent agenda is presented.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Say aye.
We have a motion, we have a second, I'll appear and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Now we'll take us to, uh, truth and taxation presentation maybe first, correct?
Yes.
Okay. It's all yours.
Okay, so, um, truth and taxation public hearing, this is a standard yearly, um, report or a public hearing that the city do every year, just to kind of have transparency to residents as to the budget process for the next year. Uh, before we start, um, just a reminder that property valuation questions is not the focus of this meeting, it's the Board of Equalization meeting that's held in April to answer those type of questions. This is strictly just kind of an overview of the next year's budget.
Can I jump in real quick to clarify? This presentation, you're gonna go through it, and then we'll open up?
Yes.
Truth and taxation, public, okay, thank you.
All right, so what is truth and taxation? It's just to enhance public participation in the property tax system and to educate the public on how property taxes are calculated. Uh, it's to encourage the public to understand the local government budget process and to encourage the public to become involved in helping the local officials set spending priorities. Um, this is kind of an overview of the city's, uh, tax rates in the past. If you want to look at that for a second. Um, our two thousand eight preliminary is at fifty-two percent. Um, that was up from point five percent of the final levy for last year, or tax rate for last year. So the budget process, um, staff prepares the proposed budget. The proposed budgets are then reviewed, uh, at several meetings by the city council and staff. Um, we do offer, uh, like citizen involvement at, um, at those meetings and, or welcome it, and, um, we do have, we have had a couple budget workshops as well that are open to the public. Uh, the preliminary tax levy and budget was due in September of two thousand seventeen, just as a reminder for that. Um, you can set the levy and the budget at a certain amount, but you can't go above that after you've set that preliminary budget or levy. Uh, you can only decrease it. Um, the city did additional budget review after that preliminary tax levy, and, um, just then today, uh, at this meeting is the final budget adoption and where we go over, um, and get public input as well on, on what our final numbers are. Um, so for the two thousand eighteen general fund revenues, um, for our preliminary budget, um, this is kind of the breakdown of taxes that would be levied for the general fund, license and permits revenue, intergovernmental revenue, which is your local government aid, charges for services and miscellaneous. Um, and so with all those, with that local government aid, it kind of set our, um, general tax levy for the preliminary budget at five hundred and five thousand, two hundred eighty-three seventy-two, which was an increase of about eleven thousand from, from the two thousand seventeen final budget. And then if you look at the bottom, the, the total, um, change in revenues, um, that we were projecting is about a hundred and eleven thousand. Um, and most of that is because of the change in license and permits. We are seeing an, like, an increased amount of building permits, um, being pulled, which brings an additional revenue that offsets, um, kind of the rest of the, or, kind of increases that revenue line item and then can reduce then our levy revenue. Two thousand eighteen general fund expenditures, this is just kind of a summary of where our preliminary budget was at and the change from the two thousand seventeen budget. Um, we did see an increase, some increases, if you could see the change, um, in general government. I know, um, we've since gone through it and reduced, reduced a lot of those numbers. Um, we've had a increase in general government by about ninety-one, public safety about thirty-nine, public works twenty-five, parks about one, about two thousand, and compost. Um, and I know in our packets, we do have kind of a, I think, a better description of where those increases were, or why those increases were, um, were suggested. Um, so there was about a hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred sixty-nine seventy-two increase suggestion from the two thousand seventeen budget. Uh, and here's kind of, kind of a breakdown, um, of where that funding was coming, or where we were projecting. Um, there were some, just some reinvestments into the community center, the, uh, big one being the comprehensive plan, that's a yearly, um, I mean, a ten-year project, or, no, a ten-year project, a project that's done every ten years. We do have an election next year, um, and that, and then some other one-time projects. Um, so some factors for, um, the two thousand eighteen tax levy, the market value for properties is, is based on, uh, assessments done by the Carver County Assessors Office. Um, we do have, uh, a, a review of the city of mayor. The current increasing trend, um, is that we have seen a, kind of a twelve percent increase in our market value. Um, so as we see more, um, see more residential properties coming in, then the tax is kind of spread out, um, yeah, we have seen a, a twelve percent increase in our market value. Um, like I said, we've had thirty-five new homes this year, and then one commercial property. So after we did do our, after our preliminary budget, we did relook at, um, the, kind of where we want to spend money and, and, or the line items and where we want to cut, um, we ended up, the city, um, council and staff did end up cutting or reducing it by about, I think it was thirty thousand dollars, um, from the preliminary. Um, so for the general, there's a better diagram that I'm gonna shift to. Um, the tax levy for the general fund will increase about thirty-nine thousand, eight-hundred seventy-three dollars and twenty-six cents. Um, and that's just growing, growing needs, planning for the future and some debt service that, that we have yet to kind of pay off. Um, so this is the, um, the final proposed levy. Um, last year we had a general, uh, revenue, um, that's our levy that we, that, for the general fund of four hundred ninety-four thousand, two hundred eighty-nine. This year we actually saw, it's actually a, a two point seven zero, I apologize, decrease. Um, we reduced kind of what we're, um, what our general fund levy will be from last year by about thirteen thousand, three hundred fifty-eight. Um, and then our debt service did increase because I think there was some unaccounted debt that we didn't have on that debt levy last year. And so the total change is about thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy-three twenty-six for a four point one nine percent change. But if you calculate and it is in your packet, I couldn't, yeah, I couldn't get it on this screen, um, we're actually, our, uh, tax rate will be fifty point four nine, which is down from last year, which was fifty-one point five zero. So our preliminary tax rate was fifty-two, and we brought it down based on going through our budget and reducing some of those line items that we felt we, um, we could budget a little bit more conservative on. Um, we were able to reduce it by one and a half percent. So that'll be the tax rate, the final tax rate, um, that's, that's being proposed for, for next year. Um, and I know in the packet, there is kind of a, what that means for property owners, um, like if, if they do have a, I can pull that quick. Um, I think they should see just, um, like a little bit of a tax, like, uh, by like a hun, like if their value of their property is two hundred fifty thousand, they, they should see like a, um, like a decrease in about a hundred and eleven dollars in, if their va, if the value of their house stays the same for next year. Um, yep, so our tax rate will be, will be lower, which is good, and, um, and based on the slide that I showed at the beginning, the city of mayor has reduced or maintained the budget in the past seven years. So we've been, um, steadily declining, and part of that is, I mean, while we do have a little bit of an increase in what we're spending, because our market values are where they're, are, are cities kind of growing, um, it's kind of, um, we're seeing it spread out a little bit more, which is, which is a little positive thing.
Okay, perfect, thank you. All right, then I will, uh, I'll look for motion to open the public hearing for the truth and taxation for public comments.
I'll make that motion?
You have a second. Good motion, second, I'll appear and say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. So the, uh, public hearing is now open. If there's any one from the audience who would like to address council, ask any questions, clarification on the presentation that may be presented. I think it is now statute on how long this has been, we have to keep it open, is there?
No, not for this one. No, for that.
All right, seeing no one, no one approaching the podium, then I'll look for a motion to close the public hearing and resume the regular city council meeting. We have a motion? And we have a second?
I'll try to get.
We have a motion, a second, I'll appear and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. All right, we are resuming council meeting. That'll take us to seven A one, approval of the general fund budget for two thousand eighteen, resolution twelve dash eleven dash seventeen dash thirty-nine.
Okay. Okay, so, um, I know we kind of just went over this a little bit. Um, so, um, as, as I just stated, um, this is the, in your packet is the general fund budget for the city of mayor for tax collection for two thousand eighteen. Um, staff has made some adjustments based on previous workshops, um, since the preliminary budget passage in September. Um, and I did highlight in the, um, in the packet, kind of where we saw some increases and decreases and, and why there were changes in some line items from last year. Um, the final budget amount, um, we did see about a thirty thousand, uh, decrease from the preliminary budget that was passed in December, um, and that's kind of highlighted. Apologies, I'm trying to, I should try and.
Any special other questions I don't have on this, uh, budget from our last, um, budget meeting we had? Okay, no verifications we need on this, or anything okay?
Yeah, so, yeah, so in your packet is the resolution that would pass our, like, the general budget, um.
Yep, I'll look for motion to approve, uh, resolution twelve dash eleven dash seventeen dash thirty-nine, the final two thousand eighteen general fund budget and that levy. Motion, we have a second?
I'll try to get.
No motion, second, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll appear and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. That will take us to the approval of final levy for two thousand eighteen.
Okay, so this is the final levy that will be, um, that will be, or the proposed final levy that to be adopted. It's our general fund levy that, that also encompasses our, our debt levy. And so that would be, the total levy for that would be nine hundred ninety-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-three, and there's a resolution to, um, pass that final tax levy in your packet.
Any clarification, anyone? We have some, yes, we have that, okay. If not, I'll look for a motion to approve, uh, resolution twelve dash eleven dash seventeen dash forty, final tax levy for the city of mayor. We have a motion, we have a second? We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? I'll appear and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. That'll take us to the enterprise budget.
Okay, so I know at the, at our last workshop, we did a review of, of, um, our proposed budget for the water and sewer. Um, those are reflected in our two thousand eighteen amounts, um, on the, on the memo from, from myself. Um, we do require a motion to approve those amounts. Um, I know, coming up next is kind of a review of our rates. Um, I know in the past, um, before I came, there was, um, like a five-year rate study done, and we're kind of at year three of that rate study. Um, so I know, uh, I don't, I think that's kind of a discussion we have to have tonight, is, will be kind of our rates. Um, there is, I mean, if, if you look at my memo, there is, in the sewer budget, there is about an increase of about ten thousand dollars that were, that staff is proposing for the, for next year. Um, in the water budget, um, about twenty-nine thousand increase. Um, at this time, I guess, my understanding is that we do levy a little bit of, or about three hundred thousand to offset our sewer rates. Um, so in order to kind of keep our rates the way that they are legally, we can levy, um, to pay off some of our debt for the sewer, um, fund. And so that's what we're doing right now, to kind of keep our rates the way that they are for the sewer fund. Um, right now, our water, uh, according to our audit, we do, how, we are kind of, we are above, like, the revenues that we bring in, we're a little, we're, we're above our expenditures, we're doing fine there. Our sewer budget, however, according to the audit, is, is below. We're bringing in, um, we're not bringing in enough revenue to cover those expenditures. And so, um, I think that, um, I mean, according to state statute, we do have to run this enterprise fund as, um, it has to be, the revenues have to be able to cover the expenditures. Um, and so we have to kind of run it as, um, kind of like a business, where it needs to meet, um, our revenues do need to meet the expenditures, um, that we, that we're, or what we're spending. And so, I don't know if I'm explaining this as great, but I think, um, one thing that would be good is, I think that the previous city administrator did a good job with that rate study. I know it was approved, um, for the five-year increase. Um, I think it, we do have some debt falling off for the water and sewer funds in a couple years, and so I don't know if you guys are willing to maybe, I put that in, the rate study in there for you guys, because I, historically, we followed that rate study. Um, I don't know if you would like to take a year to reanalyze?
Let me interrupt just for a minute, let's first, let, we'll, let me talk about that let's first, um, if we could, I'll look for motion to approve the sewer fund budget in the amount of eight hundred thirty-five thousand, two hundred six dollars, and the water fund budget in the amount of four hundred seventy-nine thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars.
You're asking?
Yeah, oh, yeah, motion, uh, okay, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? I'll appear and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, I just wanted to make sure, because we have the rate study as the next.
Oh, yeah, okay, I apologize. Um, yeah, and those, those, um, expenditures, proposed expenditures are highlighted in the packet. Um, also in the packet is, I did kind of do like a, a study, like a small study of neighboring communities using an average of five hun, or a five thousand gallons. Um, I mean, we're kind of, we're kind of equal, I would say, to, to two of the communities. Um, and like, I, I want to use some caution in comparing to other communities, like, some communities don't have both facilities that we have. We've, we have a water treatment and a wastewater treatment facility. Some cities do not have both of those, and so, um, and then, like I said, we do have some debt falling off in the next few years for our water and sewer. And so I guess, and I, um, I've been trying to understand, I know the rate study included that debt, but I also am not sure if it included the review, and maybe Kyle knows, of that debt falling off. Um, and so I just am trying to understand what that would mean. Like, if we're increasing rates for three years, if some of that debt falls off, then, then are we, then, kind of, did we set ourselves up for high rates?
Okay, sorry.
And so I guess my suggestion would be maybe to look at, relook at this, kind of, our debt versus our, the costs that we have for the water and sewer, um, fund. Um, or if you're comfortable, we can stick with, we can pass the rates for two thousand eighteen and still do a review of, kind of, w, yeah, I, I'm just trying, and kind of it.
Our was around this.
I'm trying to get my arm.
We have the rate study.
We do have the rate study.
We have the rate study, we, and the current, the proposed, these came from the rate study that was performed, you're suggesting for this year. Command is?
Well, the results from, uh, child studies should be somewhere available.
Well, I do have the, the.
I remember it was thorough. I remember that it also considered some other things. It had everything. Yeah, it had the debt service for three hundred and seven thousand for the amount, and then it had.
Yeah, and I have, I, uh, I do have that. Um, yeah, and so I guess, if we want to, if, if we want to follow, if the rate study, this would be year three of the rates increasing, um, and I know Luann did a really good job with it, and I know Kyle worked with her, I'm, there's just some things I don't understand, and so I'm trying to wrap my head around it to make sure that this study included the debt falling off, um, in the future, so that we're not, so that we're not incre, keeping increasing rates.
I'm not sure why.
If our debt, if we're gonna remove some of that debt, but.
Okay, so if you're following our study that we have and staying in line with that, maybe we're gonna be, or possibly postponing a year, not have, or not raising them, no?
Just to make sure that we're.
Well, what I recall was that there was an easy calculation that we, not easy, but there was a spreadsheet or something that you could adjust things, and that's, we were gonna look at it every year. We decided to do the five years, just 'cause it, we didn't want to put that burden on the taxpayers. I mean, the more, the concern was more on the water plant than it was on wastewater. I think the water's been in red for a lot of years, and so we were gonna look at where things were coming in every year. So there's some things you can adjust, and then that would help change the rates out, so it could be less, with our hope.
Right.
But again, it's, the water treatment plant is more about usage, so the more people using it, it's not more people paying in, it's more people actually using the water too, so then that puts more of a, that's what I recall the conversation, that there, that rural water came out, so it might not be a bad idea that maybe we do that again, and just maybe walks through it.
Okay, so I, we have a rate increase in front of us, so I'll look for, so I'll look for a motion, and if we don't get a motion, I, you know, or a second, and it passes, then I, I guess we'll just keep the rate as is for this year. So I'll look for a motion approving resolution twelve dash eleven dash seventeen dash forty-one, uh, with the proposed increases, um, per the five-year rate study.
This would be year three?
Yeah.
Can we, so if you was, can we still discuss it though? Oh, yeah, absolutely. Okay, I'll make the motion to approve, wait, rate three.
Even if you make motion, second, you can still, obviously, vote against it.
Right, I want to talk about it.
So you're making a motion, two, two, three, two, three, increase, with the resolution, okay, anyway, a second? For the sake of discussion, I guess I'll second that, okay. We have a motion, a second, to approve resolution twelve dash eleven dash seventeen dash forty-one, approving the proposed increase for rate sewer.
See, my question is, if we don't approve it now, then we can't make any changes for a year.
I don't, I don't know, that's, I think we can.
Or what if we?
I think you'd like to do it at the beginning of the year to.
Can you table it and then do a rate study and then halfway through the year and decide if? Why do we want to redo a rate study? Just because we don't know if it included?
Yeah, I don't need to do, like, a new rate study. I just, um, and maybe it's simply just having them come out and, and help me understand.
Maybe it's a phone call, maybe tell you.
Like, if it has included the debt getting taken off. Because I don't want us to keep increasing rates to cover, I mean, like, yeah, we have to cover our debt, but then, like, if we're covering, we're meeting the debt, but then all of a sudden, the debt falls off, like, our, our rate's too high then. I mean, wish we could always redo, well.
I mean, if there's a chance of, you know, us being able to reduce it, you know, I'd rather not.
I would just call them up and see if they can answer your questions. I just get nervous.
We don't have to.
Yeah, I don't want a rate.
I don't want a rate, we don't have to, if we know that we've got debt falling off later.
Right.
And I tend to agree with that. I, I, I think this is a small enough increase, I would be fine holding steady, even if it was for the entire year to give, to, I, I don't, I think we'll still be okay. Um, and then if we take it back up, again, if that was what was determined, uh, that's my thoughts on it.
I agree.
But, I mean, I think to the point, whoever, I think we can raise them anytime during the year. We, we can do that, I think it's more convenient for residents to know what they're at the year, for, for the entire year, than halfway through, we're doing it, and then we're going to do it again in January. I, I just think there's some convenience, but I think we can do it anytime.
Right, and I can try and get it figured out by January.
Yeah, I mean, I think we wanted to relook at it every year, to see if we didn't have to go as high up, or if the, the end goal could be lower, so maybe next, like, this year was the end, and those rates would sustain up.
Do you have a recall, was that done last year? Okay, so we just went off the-
It was two thousand, two thousand and fifteen.
So we went off the, we went off the proposed?
Oh, yeah, it was running year three.
That's right, okay, yeah. I recall when we did it, I don't believe that the debt falling out was part of it. I don't remember, I don't think we did, so wastewater, or the water plant that doesn't fall off, like, twenty twenty-four or something or something.
Yeah, I think we have a couple in twenty twenty.
Right, and then the water fund, the enterprise fund for the water is lower than the wastewater is. And I know we were dipping out of that pretty heavily the last few years. You know, each year we dipped out another, I want to say like a hundred thousand, and every year almost we're under. So, um, and that one, you know, only, only the rates are used in that one, but the sewer is different too. So, and then I, the sewer rates, there, there, the sewer fund, that, that, that's, that's fallen out to the water. So, you know, and then, that's kind of the same, because we're kind of dipping out a little bit. Okay, let's get, we talk on it.
I would rather have Maggie, and even myself, just get a better understanding, and like you said, wrap their, wrap their head around it, wrap around-
Yeah, and I can definitely try and bring it back by January, and we can make a decision there, and get a little more in.
All right, we have a motion, uh, and a second on the table to approve the proposed rate increase. I'm sorry, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Motion is failed, motion failed. All right, we'll, more to come on that then, in January. Then we will move to, um, seven eight five, RFP for city attorney.
Yep, um, so, request for, in front of you is a request or proposal for the city attorney and legal services. Uh, I know we had talked about this at a, at a previous meeting, um, and I was just going to bring it back for final approval. Um, I did include kind of a, a, um, schedule in, in here as to, um, what it would look like. Um, but, um, this is just approving the final RFP to be, to be, um, distributed.
And this came, this came in front of us at last meeting, correct?
Yes.
And we, um, talked about a few changes. Can you go over those real quick, Phil?
Oh, yeah, um-
Do you have, I think there were two or three of them?
Yes.
Hold on.
One was the addition of the ability to at least come to one city council meeting a quarter. Um, and then to have, I think, like, those city council rates, like, a city council rate for, I, I mean, a meeting rate for those meetings. Um, I know we also added mileage and time. We want that to be in their, like, breakdown of their services, and...
And then there was a, there was, but their terms on it was for, like, so many years, just to remove that.
Oh, yeah, we were going to look into, I, yeah, it, we were going to look into if it had to be a certain, um, I think we had a range of, it was a set three years before, and then I think it was like a year contract after that. I did get rid of that, um-
So you're going to follow up with the league to find out what they recommended?
Right, I'm trying to think what they said. Um, I, I think what I did was I looked at, um, other commu- other RFPs that other people had, and, or other cities had, and they did not include that, um, in their RFP, like, they didn't include, like, a set, um, like, a set schedule. And I don't know, like, if, um, because I think a lot of our current ones are just year to year, kind of, we approve, like, when rate changes occur, we just approve, like, new rates, but, um, yeah, ended up taking that out.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the RFP for city attorney and legal services.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, a second, second, a motion, I think, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, seven eight six, Eler's proposal for a bachelor.
Okay, um, at our last, uh, city work, council workshop, I did bring in, um, um, Jack Fay with, uh, Eller's Investments, um, just to kind of introduce himself and to kind of give, um, some fees. Like, I, I did reach out to him, because we do have, like, an investment portfolio that I've been looking at, um, and just reaching out to him for some guidance, um, and potential partnership and future investment, management of those investments. We currently have investments in four different, four different companies, and I kind of just want him to work with me to review, um, those investments, and if we're getting the best, um, if we're, just, like, because I don't understand it at his level, and I just want to make sure that we're investing where we should be, and just, it's just kind of like another consultant that is helping me make sure that we're, um, investing where we should be, and that we're getting the best return on our investments. Um, I did get a con- this, in the, here is an agreement that we would be looking at with him to sign. Um, he did include some schedule of fees. Um, I did reach back out to him, I apologize, I didn't put that in the packet. He did, or did I, um, he did say that it would be about five grand for the to- I think it's based on the total amount of, um, investments that we have. Um, but he, he did, uh, provide, like, a, um, estimate that he thought it would be about five grand, which I did put in the budget, um, for next year. Um, and so, I guess, um, what I'm looking for is, is that the council discusses and reviews if this is-
Okay, so, his fee for the investing, he thinks is going to run about five grand, based on our value of our fund?
Right, mhm.
Is, doesn't that come right out of it? Is that something, and maybe from municipal, it's different, that doesn't come right out of the account, and he takes it out of there?
No.
We, all that stays the same, and we just pay him from our budget for that, versus coming out of the-
Yeah, he doesn't get paid based on, like, what we, what we make, like, interest?
No, I understand that.
Okay.
I, I understand that, but just based on, it doesn't come out of the investment account itself.
Um-
For me and the priv- and the private side, I have an investment company doing my investments, and they take, they take their commissions right out of my account, I don't pay them.
Okay, um-
So that's, that's how I make sure we're not budgeting for something, if it's going to be coming out of, okay? You understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, yeah, um, I guess, yeah, cor- I, the way I, the way I understood it was that we would, it would be a separate-
Okay, and maybe that's the way it is for, um, the public sector.
I can double check that as well, um-
But we've accounted for it?
Yep.
In the budget, okay.
Is this something that he typically doesn't already do for us every year, every?
No, they don't do our investments.
They don't do our investments, uh, previous city administrator had been kind of handling some of those, uh, with the different accounts, and we had, we had some discussion wrapped around it last meeting, and, um, just felt that a professional should be doing this, as our investing, and make sure it's properly invested, and I'm, I-
Yeah, and I think we-
I'm just certain that that, a professional doing this will make us more than that five thousand, more than we would have made ourselves, is, is, is speculation, obviously, um, but typically-
Right, and right now, I'm, like, reaching out to them anyways, like, when we do have, like, CDs that mature, I do reach out to them anyways, and so I'm, I'm, like, to bring in somebody that will actually help me, like, not full-time, but, like, help me with the whole package, I think would be beneficial, instead of kind of piecemealing it, um.
Okay, I, uh-
And based under, when he was retiring us, he said, we have about three million dollars of investments, about five thousand dollars a year for its fee, and then looking at a schedule of fees, the three million dollars investment is fifty-two fifty a year, so, yeah.
And I know, like, one of the goals was to, at least, you know, try, and educate me better on how to do investments, and, and to, um, and, I don't know if I would get rid of him completely, but then, give me the confidence to at least make some of those decisions, sure, by myself, but, um-
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the, to approve the investment advisory agreement, but, uh-
Showed.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Okay.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, seven eight seven, approval of auditor fees for twenty seventeen audit with Apdo, Eckenmeyer's.
Um, so, uh, we do need a motion approving these fees. Um, the fee for next year, or the two thousand and seventeen audit is about twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, and then three thousand for long-term financial management. Um, I did provide a supplemental, um, document that showed last year's, uh, last year's was about twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three, and then two thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight for the long-term management. So there is an increase from last year's audit, um, I, I'm, yep.
Can you explain a little bit about the long-term financial management plan?
Well, that's-
It's that long, I mean, I understand the auditing, I understand after, we get audited, we have, they've been doing it, and I think they've done a great job for us in the past years.
Yeah.
Obviously, slight increase, which we probably should expect, but, um, maybe if we-
I don't know, like, I am trying to figure that out as well. I, I think with the previous city administrator they were working with, her to have, like, a, um, more of a financial plan, like, a few budgeting in, for the future, like, what items, and I, I've looked at it a little bit, um, I don't, I haven't sat down with them yet to, to understand it completely, but I think that they were-
This is worded, this has anything to do with that, our financial investments, um, okay, so-
No, this is more like, um-
The wording's just a little, that's what I'm looking at on the financial, but it's more, mindfully, it's more questions if it's proper coding, or proper things, and, um, where the things are going and line items from a budget.
Yeah, I mean, we do reach out to them quite a bit for that kind of service, and then, um, also, I think the previous city administrator had started working with them on, kind of, if we want to budget for something, like, a larger item, like, like, um-
Okay, so CIP items?
Right, right, and the whole out.
Okay, okay, thank you, that clarifies it. All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the auditor fee for twenty seventeen audit and long-term financial management plan for twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars, and three thousand, uh, dollars for the long-term financial management.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, then. Any further discussion?
I guess my only concern is I want to make sure that that long-term financial management plan has absolutely nothing to do with what Eller's is going to be doing.
Okay, yeah, I can look at that. It, it's, it's, um, I'm pretty sure it's just, like, day-to-day, because we do use them as kind of our, um, resource for those kind of questions, like, right now, I'm reaching out to them quite a bit, trying to understand, kind of, um, like, our debt, like, some of our debt service, and just our general budget as a whole. And I know that that's kind of, I think, where that comes out of, but, um, I'll just make sure, verify that it doesn't have any investment.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven eight eight, election polling location designation.
Um, so, uh, I think it was this year that the state, um, passed a new statute that says that regardless of, if you have an election year or not, you have to designate, um, designate a poll, or, yeah, a polling place for the election year, and so that's just a resolution in front of you that designates the community center city hall here at four thirteen Blue Jay Avenue as the election polling place for next year's election.
I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution twelve dash eleven dash seventeen dash forty-two. We have a motion, we have a second. A motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven eight nine, please.
Okay, so, in front of you is the agreement for planning services. Um, I believe that this is done every year. Um, as you know, our planner is Municipal Belt and Group, uh, who is represented by John Anderson. Um, the agreement is essentially the same as last year, except there, I did provide an extra sheet for you tonight, the rates will be going up just a little bit. There was a letter from the, um, from Joanne Fauch, who's the company, um, the, uh, company owner, and she just said that the rates would be increasing from, I believe, eighty-five to ninety dollars an hour. Um, and that's just, um, because the cost of their business, just general cost, has been increasing. And so, um, next year, we will, we would be seeing a five-dollar increase per hour for their service.
All right, we have a motion approving, uh, entering the contract with, um, development group for planning services for twenty eighteen.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
Yeah, sometimes you can get, like, an associate at a lower rate, is that a possibility here?
Um, I don't know how big their, their firm is, I don't know, like, if they have-
They're even up to charge ninety dollars an hour.
And I don't know if it's because they're small, that, that's why they're, I don't know.
A lot, I've always thought that was a lot.
Yeah, I'm certainly starting to get up there, I, I think in our long-term goals and planning, as we've, we're going to eventually have to start deciding when we add a city planner on with our growth and the homes, and some of that's off, that's got to get balanced out, and I think this is cheaper than a, than an employee, um, from that aspect.
So he attends planning commission, which is for sure.
Right.
At, at five-five dollars fee, though. Is that the only kind of meeting that he comes to, though? And then here, when we need him.
Right, and so I think we budget, um, and I'm just kind of throwing that out there, I think we budget, like, five to seven grand a year for his services, um, and I think we stick it below that. Um, I mean, I know this year it's been higher, because we've had the comp plan, but, um, and I don't know, usually there's a contract for how much that's going to cost for that company, so I don't- and I don't know, usually there's a contract for how much that's gonna cost for that company, so I don't know if we find that or not. I know the others who we work for had like a contract like that from them saying, this is how much we're gonna charge for the comp plan. So, just for general planning services, I think we've been under what we've budgeted for, for planning services. Cause yeah, he just does, um, he does planning commission meetings and then he just does as needed review of like any plans that come in.
But I, I think to your point, it's worth that, it's worth asking.
Yeah, yeah.
Finding out if there's someone who'll be coming in at a little lower rate on some of the stuff.
So it's this thing, is this thing saying that while he's traveling, it's only twenty-five dollars an hour, but once he gets here, it's ninety?
What?
Is that the way I'm reading it, or is the twenty-five in, on top of the ninety?
I'm sure it's the ninety, I'm sure he gets twenty-five dollars, you know, so it's actual time spent traveling, so they're paying for, for going to and from the meetings, and probably, now they're paying the, I'm sure we're paying the ninety dollars an hour to be here too.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, maybe an RFP in future, or-
So what are you saying? Are you saying that when he's driving, he gets the twenty-five plus the ninety?
Well, not plus the ninety, he's probably just the twenty-five dollars an hour to and from.
That's the way I interpret it.
And then once the meeting starts, he gets ninety dollars.
Once he gets here?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how I'd read it, that's what I spent your hour to and from meetings, and those are monthly meetings, are you correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Hour long, two hours at?
Yeah.
Two, two hours.
Yeah, it depends, and we have a lot of growth coming and, sure enough, where are they audit?
Uh, New Craig or something.
New Craig.
Yeah, some close.
What's that, Holloway?
Yeah, probably, I don't, yeah, yeah. We've got quite, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
And then you'll ask about that, if there's an associate.
Yeah.
Alright, that'll take us to ten, the bio solids contract, if you could quick give us all the view on that.
Um, so, I don't know.
I see it over the screen, Chris, you don't mind taking the volume maybe a little over, I'd appreciate it.
Well, this is a, this is an agreement we received from the city of Lester Prairie, it's uh, it's uh, for the annual bio solids that we haul, it's a simple, simple agreement. In the past, um, it's pretty much been a global agreement on the prices, this is the first time that we've ever received a, an actual agreement. Um, and the things that are included in the agreement are right on with what we've, what we've been doing in the past, all the way up back up until two thousand twelve. The city of Lester Prairie hasn't raised their rates, we've been eight cents a gallon, we're receiving our bio solids since two thousand twelve. This only difference in this contract is that now they are asking for a two cent per gallon addition, if we were to, when we're hauling our bio solids, which is in the spring and the fall, we were to haul them directly to their digester, they would get an extra two cents per gallon, because it would occupy the, some capacity in their digester, which is a big storage tank. Um, we've only had that occur once since two thousand six, where we've had to haul to their digester. They, pretty much just, our contract hauler takes it directly out to their land application sites and they just, they disperse it right out in the site, the sites that they approved and it's never been an issue. We do have backup, uh, backup permits with the city of Hutchinson, so that in case they were at capacity or something would happen where we would have to haul out, we do do, maintain a, a permit with the city of Hutchinson. We pay a hundred dollar fee per year for that permit. We also used to have one with the city, or with Met Council. Um, that industrial permit cost us in excess of a thousand dollars per year. Uh, we since have deleted that permit with, with Met Council. We, we only use them once during startup of our first mechanical plant and the, um, to be honest with you, the uh, the permit requirements to analyze the bio solids and disperse of them and just transportation costs to get it down to Saint Paul and also to Hutchinson or, you know, make the city of Lester Prairie site really good for us and, and economical, so. I don't, you know, I don't think this is a bad thing to have the agreement, um, I think it's a good thing, um, and it's a simple, simple one. They're just requesting that we have the bio solids analyzed once per year, which is required by the MPCA prior to hauling.
Okay.
So, I would recommend approval of it, we wanna maintain that site and keep up with them.
Right.
I guess if they get carried away with the, with the additions to the thing, then we can, we can revisit some of the other sites and see. I do know that they're much more expensive to haul to the other sites, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Clover?
Where are they hauling this stuff to?
They have, they have MPCA approved fields around the city of Lester Prairie.
You have field vision.
Yeah, farm fields, yeah. It's fertilizer is basically what it is, um, so-
Good stuff.
Yeah, it's good stuff for them, yeah.
So this is just a continuous-
It has been a continuous thing since, that we've been doing, we, at budget time, we normally contacted their city clerk, seeing if there was gonna be any increases in their cost. She would verbally tell Luanne, "No," and we would, we would be billed as such, and you know, so, um, this is the first time that I've seen this agreement come through, they must've just developed it, so.
Well, we gotta think, we got a resolution or not?
No, there's no resolution to it, but I guess we could want it.
I think they're all screwed up. Do we have a resolution, did we?
No, no, we don't have a resolution, but we'll, uh, look for a motion to approve the agreement, uh, with Lester Prairie to accept bio solids. We have a motion, and we have a second.
Yep, I'll second that. Sorry.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, thanks Greg, I appreciate it. Okay, that will take us to uh, seven B, uh, appointment process update for the um, uh, the appointments for chief and assistant chief, and I can talk real quick about this. This is to tie off from last meeting, we did um, have some discussion at last meeting, we just need to make sure we were properly set up. Um, there were some concerns with the process of chief and assistant chief, and we didn't get the information we needed, so there was a motion and a second to um, not do any appointments and leave the current chief and assistant chief in place in the twenty eighteen till we could figure it out. Since then, personnel committee has met, um, and I just thought it was appropriate to make another motion. Our recommendation would be that we have looked at the processes, if it's in line with what the lead wants, there was some miscommunication there on, uh, on the city's part. I would then, uh, the, the personnel committee is making the recommendation to move forward and let the appointments go through as they normally would, uh, for chief and assistant chief. We uh, do recognize there's some room for improvement and that personnel commi- committee will be working on that through twenty eighteen to um, just tweak, tweak it a little bit and make a few minor improvements. But overall, uh, perfectly in line with what the lead's recommending. So that being said, I, and I, and what I wanted to do is tie that off from last meeting, I didn't want it to be, you know, if a year from now we're looking at that and we made a motion to hold off, then also we have to appoint, I just wanna make sure to close that loop. So I would promote, um, to continue uh, with the appointments of chief and assistant chief as uh, current procedure. I'll make that motion. We have a motion, do we have a second? A motion, a second, any further discussion?
Why don't we make a motion to keep it the same?
Well, make motion, keep the process the same, um, because last meeting, we suspended it and we-
Oh, yeah?
Yep, yep.
Sorry.
So I'm just closing that loop up, so if we look at, you know, a year later, look at these, uh, it's a little clearer, or more clear. Uh, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, and that'll take us now to officer appointments for twenty eighteen for the fire department.
And that, I did talk to Rod today, I should've included chief to Bob Carlson in the list as well.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve the mayor fire department, uh, twenty eighteen officers.
A motion, I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye. With the addition of chief two.
Yeah, with, yeah, with the addition of chief two. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Okay, um-
And then move uh, uh, B three, appointment.
Yep, so um, I just have in the packet a resolution regarding the appointment of Daniel Lee to the mayor fire department. Um, Daniel Lee has passed all the requirements for the fire de- mayor fire department, and the chief is recommending the appointment of Daniel Lee as a firefighter.
Uh, the promotion to approve resolution twelve dash eleven dash seventeen dash forty-three, uh, the appointment of Daniel Lee to the mayor fire department. We have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Trying to put any background checks in to be done?
Alright, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. And that should take us to seven C, public works, makeup air unit replacement.
Thank you, Eric. Members of council, um, you have my memo in front of you, um, as part of our semi-annual maintenance inspection out at the wastewater treatment plant, we have a company hired to do our inspection of our Hy-Vac equipment, which is our furnaces, uh, air conditioners and such. And during our fall inspection, uh, the natural gas makeup air unit for the clarifier building was found to have a cracked heat exchanger. Uh, this condition requires the unit to be immediately isolated from the gas supply and turned off. Uh, running the unit in this condition can lead to a dangerous CO levels in, in that space that it's heating. Um, Owen Company and the city staff, we researched possible replacement, replacement of the faulty heat exchanger and found that this part is no longer manufactured. Um, the welding or any other type of repair to the heat exchanger is not an option, so based on those facts, um, it was, we needed to replace the unit. So, um, just as a little background, the original unit was eleven years old, um, we did have it identified a replacement in the CIP in the year twenty twenty-six, so we had a twenty-year replacement on, on the unit, and we had twenty thousand dollars identified to replace that unit in the CIP. The original unit was manufactured in Canada, and when we looked at replacement of the unit, we thought, just based on that, um, we wanted to look for something that was manufactured in the United States. Um, this would make it more efficient to replace the parts in the future. We did use the specifications from the original unit to uh, provide for the, for obtaining replacement costs. And as such, we obtained bids on two types of units for replacement, which you have listed, both the captive air and the Titan units, which are the, the type of units that are listed here. Um, both meet the required specifications, but as you can see, the Titan is much more expensive, uh, of the two, um, and I guess you would consider a Cadillac of the two type of units.
What's the difference?
Huh?
What's the difference?
The differences are, they've got a lot more detailed controls in them, the actual construction or the housing of the unit. The picture that you see out in front of you that I supplied, that's our old unit. So basically, the body that houses the burner and the heat exchanger and all of that type of equipment, there's, the captive air has a twenty-two gauge steel double-hulled construction and the uh, the Titan has a twenty, so it's got a, it's got a heavier duty, uh, body to house the equipment.
Anything else on that?
The electrical, I know the, the, the motor size is exactly the same, the CFM and BTUs are, are the same. Um, I did talk to, actually talked to Ellie Rebar, who supplied the I- the ICE unit back in two thousand six. In fact, he is uh, one of the distributors that are recommending the captive air, or have the captive air and the Titan units that we're getting these prices from. Um, so, he had full confidence in them, I talked to a number of people and contractors that actually work on the captive air as well as the Titans, and neither of them had anything bad to say about either one of them other than the fact that the Titan is a, a more heavier duty or model and it has a lot more, it has a lot more, uh, bells and whistles than the Ty- than the captive air does. And to be honest with you, this thing needs to exchange air into this building and it needs to heat the building, okay? So, I guess in looking at that and uh, taking the consideration, the, you know, the investigation we did on the units, that's why we're recommending this, and obviously, um, looking at the prices, we're looking at a captive air unit from Owens, who does our current um, maintenance inspections, the fourteen thousand one hundred, comparative quote from Centrosota sheet metal for that same unit is twenty-three thousand. Then, looking at the Titan bids from the two companies, uh, Owens and Centrosota, the Titan indirect was thirty-two thousand six hundred and that, and the Titan from Centrosota with insulation was thirty-eight thousand three hundred. And these prices all include total removal and replacement, uh, electrical, mechanical, I mean, it's a turnkey operation to put them in. So, I mean, looking at that, staff is recommending going with a low bid of fourteen thousand from Owens to put this thing in. Uh, the cost of the project would be taken out of the two thousand seventeen capital outlay for the wastewater treatment facility, and this fund currently has a balance of nineteen thousand five hundred in it. So it would cover, we could cover it in this year's CIP, um, and we have a balance in there based on some of the projects that we did this year in two thousand seventeen. We were able to bid and get those projects done well under the CIP budget, which left us this balance luckily to take care of this piece of equipment, so. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
What kind of warranty does the captive air have, and versus the Titan?
They both have a one-year parts and labor, they're exactly the same, yep.
And what kind of housing did the, does the old one have?
That has about, that has probably the same type of housing as the uh, as the Titan. It's a, it's an old one, it's a tank, what they would call it, it's a heavy-duty model. But then looking at it, realistically, that heavy tank didn't do any better, we were looking at a twenty-year design life with, and the heat exchanger went out in it. And you can't replace that part, okay? They won't, they don't manufacture that model of heat exchanger any longer. They do have a company now, they were out of Canada, and they do have one company left, the ICE units out of Tennessee, um, but it's uh, the Titan, or the captive air is made in Iowa and the uh, Titan is made in Wisconsin, so the parts are a lot more readily available for these units, and then they are going to Tennessee for them, so.
Any other questions for Greg? Uh, a promotion to accept the low bid on all air conditioning and heating, about a fourteen thousand one hundred dollars for the new captive air indirect makeup air unit.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second.
One second.
A motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Alright, city council reports, can I, can you record them?
So maybe we got that email about the um, Jaguar Internet, sent me an email about somebody asking about, you know, where they're coming in, 'cause about a year ago they came in, we, they talked to us, that's, that's the second, the second contact I've had this week till they asked, called me and asked what the, what the plan was with that. Have you ever heard anything from Jaguar about coming in, or?
I don't know if I got the email, but.
Yeah, he um, uh-
Um, he basically-
Jason, Jason Batista, he came to the council meeting, you know, about a year ago, and was wondering what was going on with Jaguar.
Well, we've contacted him.
So I explained to him kind of what I recall from, he, he was more concerned because there isn't a lot of options and we agree with him. And he had thought that Hidden Creek, I think, can get it, but they can't, I mean, unless their neighbors, I mean...
Yeah, you have to be only so far from...
And then we talked about possibly having them lay lines when you guys were building the other additions, but they never did.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
Anyways, can you maybe just follow up with Jaguar and just see what, what's going on, to see if that is an option for us to come in?
I know about a year ago they had come, Jaguar had come here and wanted permission to, to, it's like send out a survey to everybody inside.
Never got anything.
Well, this guy's doing some light work, he has a survey already on, uh, if people would, what they currently have. So I told him, I said, if you can gather information and we'll let you know when he's coming to invite Jaguar again. Um, it doesn't hurt to bring that information. I said, the way I felt was, I'm the back of my neighborhood, if I wanted it, I'd have to convince a certain number of people from, I'm pretty sure the line runs to twenty-five. You know?
We got Jaguar in other facilities now, um, but he had to be in line for all twenty-five.
I did get it.
Cause it's that shed, it's that shed right on the trail.
So how were they able to hook up? They're on the line.
They're close to the line. In order to get into the other development, I think we have to go through a board if we're on the line for the whole building.
But we talked about having them just lay their lines when we started putting in new additions.
Fieldstone has, do they, is there fiber?
That was the plan, but I just think that they were, like, I don't think they were that interested, right?
But even the new elements are kind of the ones that are pushed out of the way, so you've still gotta...
Right.
You've got a lot of existing development to get through to get to the new development.
Right.
People sure do want to follow up.
Oh, lunch session.
Follow up, maybe it's, uh, workshop items in the twenty eighteen.
If you could, could you just let me know when you have the schedule?
Yep.
So that I can, I told him I'd let him know on Facebook when... Or you have his account, I sent him the email, you could follow. No, but here you put a survey and, so we'll just gather, gather all the information and, so if we convince all your neighbors coming from thirty, you know, maybe they'd be more inclined to dig in the line.
Eric, any other council bits? Thanks, Kevin.
Uh, park board is going to have a free movie that's coming Sunday at four o'clock and the Lions Club will be providing marshmallows and hot chocolate sauce in the video for the popcorn.
Who runs the?
Well, normally it's back, um, lifetime I ran it and this time that you've run it. Yeah.
And then, is there anything on the skating rink, are they gonna do it or not?
We're not gonna do it this year, I think it's proposed, it's some grading and then do the next.
What do they think it's gonna be this year? Cause we really, really wanted it to be this year.
The cream ring, oh, where we?
Right down here.
Oh, here, okay.
We decided that was too much of a risk.
Yeah.
Any updates?
Okay, I have a couple, we have a personnel committee meeting, um, you saw the draft minutes in your packet, we talked about the appointments and, uh, discussed sexual harassment training for employees. Uh, we had a fire department meeting I was at, um, the fire department's gonna be getting a donation from the baseball club. They've decided that they are gonna buy a new boat, uh, for getting, uh, one of those, I forget what they call them now, uh, a Zodiac boat, is what they're gonna look at and, um, if the donations don't cover it, they'll go to the relief association, we'll cover the additional costs on that. Um, I...
Most of what they're going through is that, I'm almost positive the donation's not gonna cover that.
No, then, I think they're aware of that and so then the relief, they talked about that, the relief, the relief association will cover the rest. Um, I was asked last Saturday to speak at the charter night for the Mayor Area Lions Club. Um, they were officially recognized as a charter by the International Lions, uh, they had their members, were officially, members and officers were officially sworn in. So welcome to the Mayor Area Lions Club, to our community. Um, lastly, um, just in closing, you know, obviously it's been a pretty, um, busy year with a lot of unexpected issues that we resolved this year. So I appreciate everyone's time, everyone's professionalism, um, probably more items it seems this year than there have been in the last ten years. They seem to be jammed in there, quite a few issues, uh, we've certainly worked through and we stayed the course. Thanks for Maggie, obviously for getting on board, um, you know, you kind of have to transition yourself into the new role without any assistance and do it on your own, so I appreciate that. Thanks to Public Works for everything he has done for the, for the last year, obviously. Um, thanks to Lois and Judy for helping out, um, in the office during the transition, I know that was, um, very helpful to have them. And finally, a thank you to Janelle, who probably certainly took most of it on with the, with the administrator changes. And so I certainly appreciate your professionalism and, and positive attitude as we continue to move forward, so, um, I, I do appreciate that. And happy holidays to everyone and we'll meet again in twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen. So that's all I have, um, any other business? No, any, um, information was in there, the upcoming meetings are in your packet, I'll look for motion to adjourn. We have motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. We are adjourned.
Wow, just called the alley behind our house. So, can we just, what? Oh, yeah. Yeah. Can we just keep going straight off instead of just curving and going down first? Yeah. Yeah. And now there's a big hump of just... Um, I wanna say it is, but maybe, maybe it's kind of... Thanks. It's the first year it's been like that, so I'm like, I wonder if some new guy did that and I need to...
Kyle.
It may have been.
No, it was Brent.
Yeah.
Oh, we have a workshop. I am so sorry, I am so sorry.
But I'm like...
Thank you, I'm glad.
Like... That was real subtle, I'm gonna...
I'm like, yeah.
Where are you going?
I'm going, oh gosh, thank you. I am so sorry. Alright, okay. So we'll, uh...
That's why, cause it's...
I'll come back tomorrow, I'll come back tomorrow. Alright, we will open, open the, uh, workshop meeting.
I'm gonna give you that.
Alright, thank you, you wanna start us off with, uh, the highway, the twenty twenty Highway twenty-five project?
Yeah, I know, have Dave helping with it too. Um, so, me and Dave met with Minda, um, last, last Monday. Yeah, we met with, um, three representatives of Minda last week, um, and, um, just to discuss kind of the future, uh, project on Highway twenty-five in twenty twenty. And they're just kind of in the preliminary stage of getting, they wanna start getting plans going and, um, kind of community involvement, kind of the vision for that project. And, um, just an update, they are working on the speed signs, we did talk some about that.
I'm sure they have a bunch of signs set in over at the Dale Street building area.
Yeah, so we did, we've been pressuring them on that, I have been emailing them several times and then we also did bring it up again at this meeting and they said they were, they don't know what happened, but something did happen and they did, or whatever reason.
Something didn't happen, they didn't...
I mean, all it is is really just take the side of the...
So what are they looking for, for us, for this?
Um, well, and then Dave can do that too, I, I mean, they kind of went through what they would be funding, they'd be doing kind of, um, like the ADA improvements to the sidewalks and other areas of the project. Um, I guess the discussion point now is, is there anything that the city, and, and we're gonna bring it, we're kind of trying to figure out the schedule for community involvement. Um, and, you know, what things we perceive being part of that project, is that, like, does the city want to include anything else in that project? That would be above what Minda would be providing, we provided.
So, if I could, you know, then, so, you know, if the project itself, it starts, it's gonna be a millennial, right? So they're gonna take a little bit of the service off and repaint it, presumably, the road's getting to the age where it's really kind of a preventative maintenance type of operation for them. Brings back a smoother ride for the road and ultimately adds a little structure back in it and, and is intended to extend the life of the road long-term. Minda's current policy is, when they do a project like that, now they have to upgrade and make sure everything is up to current ADA standards. And we talked about that last time when Minda was here. So that, that is the project. Now, what is, is our understanding right now is that project then, uh, really is, it's, it's the certainty in the road. It's probably reconstructing sidewalks because there's some slope issues that they need to correct. We talked about the light poles, that there's a couple of light poles that need to be adjusted or something has to give to provide the, the proper clearance around the light poles. Um, and then the ADA ramps will have to make sure that those are up to current standards. So, Minda's gonna come through, do that, and right now there's zero city cost associated with that project. Uh, and that includes, so I found out over in that last week, is they're looking to extend the trail from Fifth Street up to the Roundabout. Uh, again, I think that kind of fits into their ADA and, and kind of mobility types of things that they wanna accomplish. So it sounds like that, that potentially is gonna be part of their project, whether the city has anything to do with it or not.
Sounds like us.
So, we started talking about public involvement and, and I think everybody agrees that we want, we want people to know what's going on, we wanna be able to communicate. The, one of the questions that needs to be answered, if we're gonna open this up to the public, is what are we asking for input to? So, i- if you break down kind of the stakeholders potentially in this is, um, the city's initial body that would potentially look at this as the planning commission. Say, do planning and kind of visioning for the city and make recommendations to the council. Certainly you're gonna wanna have some, um, contact with the property owners that are directly affected by what's happening with the project. And then you kind of have the broader population of mayor that, uh, potentially would be interested in what's going on and have, have some input. The issue gets to be, or, or one of the first questions that has to be answered is, what is the city's interest in this project? If Minda's gonna come through, do a project that potentially has no cost to the city, is the city interested? Are there elements that you think need to be added to that project that you're interested in paying for? If the question, if the answer is, well, yes, but only this much, we should understand that before we ask people what they want. If the, the answer is, you know what, no, we, we're fine with it the way it is and if they gotta make their improvements and they don't send us a bill, then we're, we wanna know what they're doing, we wanna see it, but, you know, so, we're kind of coming back to you before we, we work with Minda to initiate some broader, um, public involvement. Right, it seems like it needs to be controlled to a certain extent, you don't wanna ask people to re-envision Highway twenty-five if you have no intentions of ever writing the check of, or what might come out of that vision. So I, I don't know if that makes sense, but, um, so, you know, some of the things that we talked about just, that began, it's a little unclear at this time, what might potentially be an extra cost to the city and might just have to be done for them to, again, associate this ADA stuff, but we talked about bump boats at the intersections, which would potentially do a couple of things for us. One is it start shortening up the crossing distance to get across the road, it also provides some traffic calming elements. It potentially gives you a little area to do some landscaping, things like that. So that, they don't, that, that's one thing that, you know, potentially could be thought through. Uh, we've talked about whether or not there should be a bike lane on the road. Um, the bike lane gives, uh, obviously bikes a place, kind of a dedicated place to ride their bikes. It, it does provide some, again, some traffic calming to start squeezing the driving lanes of the road a little bit, you know, something to consider. We talked about, you know, should this section between Fifth Street and Roundabout, is that okay as a rural section the way it is? Or should that be urban gutter storm sewer, kind of extend that, that urban, um, of the road and also, you know, landscaping, streetscaping, things like that. So, before we can kind of give Minda direction on what we think we want from a public involvement standpoint, we have to understand a little bit as to what even are we considering, uh, for elements of this project that, you know, again, you know, so one, one example is planning commission. Give some thought to bike lane, bump boats, landscaping, things like that, you know, small budget stuff, but you think that that should be part of this project.
We would pay for it.
Well, and not, not necessarily, but i- if, if it falls outside of what Minda would need to do to get their work done potentially. And again, you know, not necessarily big, item dollar items, but if, if you're starting with, our budget is zero, well, that makes it pretty simple. And then at that point, maybe the process is, you go ahead, do what you're gonna do. When you get sixty percent plans, we think we should show the public what this project's gonna be and if anybody has, uh, serious concerns, yeah, we, we wanna know about it, but...
Okay.
Is that, that, do I summarize that fairly maybe?
Has the, has the planning commission, has this been in front of them at all?
No, that's why we're bringing it to this day, because they need to start planning pretty early. And Minda has already started doing their, like, preliminary drawings, I guess, next, early next year, that's why we wanna work it.
More info from people, I, I think, really, realistically, just to prove the budget does, doesn't include anything for, you know, any extra money to, to do any of those projects, so.
Well, that's, they're not doing it in twenty twenty.
About that, twenty twenty, yeah.
And, um, going through this once before in a, a previous city that I lived in, at the very least, we have to get the property owners, because we are gonna be getting onto their property. We have to get them involved, at least hear them out.
And then that's gonna have to do that, I think...
Cause that was more frustrating than saying, we wanna hear your opinion, but we've already decided to do this and that's what we're gonna do, so that's very frustrating.
Yeah, and I, I agree, and I have to get, get those property owners involved as soon as we can, so they're aware of it, so they're aware of it.
Well, they're aware of it and, and you're right, I mean, they're, they're potentially gonna have the, the most direct impact and...
I want to hear their, their opinions of what they would want or...
Yeah, and, and you know, some of it might be, this is what needs to happen, but we can do it this way or this way.
Right.
Like A or B better, you know, stuff like that, but, um...
Like, yeah, and when they, then they just want, like, some guidance as to would we consider, like, lane or bump outs?
Yeah, but are some things we would like to do from those aspects to learn their thoughts on some of that, right?
I'm thinking a bump out would be a nightmare to file.
I think it would too, but...
I thought they made them, uh, zero entry now, they're just flat. The ones in Maconia are not, nope. I have never seen a bump out that's flat. It goes to flats. Well, increases...
Well, increases.
On flats.
We jump at this margin, right?
I could see a bump out on the crosswalk corner, but I don't know where else, I mean, it's appropriate there, but I, I'd be fine not doing the bump out.
Yeah, and so, you know, as we talked to them, if you have, devil's advocate, if you were to consider, okay, crossing Fifth Street, you have school traffic potentially that's coming from Mayor Luther and, and there's crossing the road there, you have Forest Street, you have the Mark Crosswalk, there's potentially traffic there. You go down the third street, you have a crossing that, of people potentially going to the gas station, convenience store, and then, um, you get down the second street and it just kind of ends up being kind of a mayday coming from the church or whatever. So, and you, you can kind of make an argument at each one of the existing intersections that there's some reason to cross the road at those locations.
Well, is that intersection, I mean, is it, is that intersection even the appropriate one for crosswalk? Remember, this would be an opportunity to maybe move our crosswalk also. And maybe it is appropriate, I don't, I don't know.
Which one?
The one down on Fourth Street. Maybe we do move it up more.
Because the in and out domains that names, we definitely want to use all the time to get to this part.
Yep.
The city hall. There's a sidewalk along.
Could it move up a block, have it more by the gas stations or anything?
But it doesn't cross over to anything up except for the gas station. But you, you have the sidewalks on both sides, so.
Yeah, that's true.
Do we need a committee? Do we just need a committee instead of sitting here and having everybody turn it up? I don't know.
Well, and so that's kind of the question.
Kind of the planning commission's job.
Couple of things, one is, if you're gonna ask for input, are you gonna try to guide or at least give, put some parameters on what, what input you're asking for, and then what is the kind of the proper process of this? It seem, would seem appropriate that you could start with the planning commission and at least ask them, okay, here's some of the elements we're at least talking about, is there, are there any pin, opinions on that, come back to the council with that. My, my, when we started talking through it, my immediate thought was, we kind of jumped to public involvement. And it seems like the general public input may be, uh, need to be more of a narrow focus than dealing with the property owners and maybe some bigger visioning and, and some of those connections and things that the planning commission might have an opinion on. And, and you have a little bit more of a developed concept or, you know, if your project is more developed before you, you bring it to the public and, not that you're not asking for input, but it, it's kind of a, here's what we're, here's what MINDOT's gonna be doing, um, and, you know, if you have, if I'm not wanting input, let us know, but, but at that point, if it kind of also indicates what stage the project's at.
There's kind of two steps to how we get the public involved, one is some visions on what we'd like to see from bump outs, bike lanes, tunnels, what, you know, whatever people wanna see on the road versus, and then as the property owner, business owners, here's what's gonna happen, would you prefer this or this, when we come down to some of those detailed things.
I would like the, for the property owners, you know, and the planning commission working together, um, because they're the ones that put them work on the street and they see the things that we will never see. And, um, so when it comes to bump outs and bike lanes, I would have the trust of property owner over my opinion, so.
Yeah. And I do think we have to somehow bring, I mean, I, I, I don't, if we were gonna start plowing tunnels underneath the road, I don't see that hap-.
No.
You know, we don't wanna get things so out of.
That's what you said.
I wouldn't like to focus, yeah.
So, we, we have to do the research.
Yeah, just want to see that, and that they, they have the, the concerns.
Yeah, we need to do the research, see if there's a, gonna be a cost involved, and then just set the parameters for them, you know, and if, if this is what it would cost, are you, are you wanna pay for it?
I think.
Which is free, these don't want this.
The light poles all day, there, as far as, are they just moving on the trees, same ones, are they replacing, or are they, um, we have, we haven't talked.
Oh, yeah, a lot of them are not.
It'd be a good opportunity, I know they're kind of expensive, but they're, uh, they're reduced by robust, they're cracking on top of the water mark, so that would be probably the opportunity to, absolutely replace those. So, just so you get their word, especially in twenty twenty.
That's something we certainly should consider.
Yeah, that's. I think, I know the basis of our first bid, but I don't know if we can change it.
Cause I know for me now that they're, if they're considering extending the sidewalk up to the round, that was one of my big concerns. As far as others, I, I don't have a lot of other concerns. If there's a bump out, great, if not, great. Um, bike lane, I'm probably a little opposed to it on state highway and we have so many bike trails, do we need it? But if, if you see that naturally, I'd be fine with it. To me, it's extra painting, I mean, it's just painting extra lines on the road and we lose some parking.
Yeah, and, and to me, one of, one of the questions is how, how, whether it's bump out, bike lanes, some of these things, is there, how big of a priority is some sort of traffic calming? Or if, 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 if this, the traffic is too fast now, is there ways to slow traffic down? There's probably some elements you could put in the project that would naturally slow the traffic.
And that'll probably be the biggest voice from the people who live on that, live on that road and see it every day. And again, I know, I drive in town and see people coming in and out, but I don't, I don't live there.
I mean, uh, there's gonna be pros and cons to everything. Those bike lanes, it, uh, you know, it gives them off the sidewalk, cause I see bikes on the sidewalk all the time and that's kind of a pet peeve of mine, they're not supposed to be there. And, but then again, does it open up the door to even more liabilities for the people that are driving? Because if you get into that bike lane, are you gonna get tickets, are, you know, are you, are you more liable if something happens? I guess if you hit a biker, no matter where it is, you're in trouble.
Whether it's through the green crosswalk or not.
Bike lane or not.
They got the right to be on the road right now without a bike lane, so.
Right.
Yeah, I, I don't.
That might be a better question for your town council, to understand the nature of it.
You know what I'm supposed to do, I think, like, to my kids and I, we go on the sidewalk, I, I can't have them riding on a twenty-five if I do the one spot by, get to the bike trail if I don't do the alley.
And if we have a line on the sidewalk, it shouldn't be that one, it should anyway.
Sure it is. People walking out of businesses and someone toons by on a bike, I've seen too many close calls there. That could be.
Yeah, I don't know.
The bike, with the bike trail, I mean, a, a bike lane isn't necessarily a bad thing either to get them to, in to town, to go into businesses either.
Yeah, all things that need to be thought through and, you know, just run the, some of, a committee or something to run the pros and cons of everything and figure out if it's gonna cost us anything. Go from there.
So it sounds to me like first stop should be planning commission and the property owners, the property owner gave this, and it's practical, I mean, they gotta have something to talk to them about before they reach out. I know they did ask maybe for a property owner list so that they can at least, uh, understand who's out there. Um, and then, it seems to me that, uh, we should get a little farther down the road and then they could revisit the, the broader public involvement or, or open house to just show them what's going on or how you, how you wanna do that. Now technically, I mean, the planning commission, the council meeting, is their own public meeting.
Right.
Somebody really has paid attention, wanting to come have input, they come do it, that's a public meeting and have that opportunity, but, yeah.
I mean, I'd, would like to involve them where, wherever we can, but I do, I still look at this project, I don't think there's a lot to do to it, bump outs and a bike lane. I don't know what more there would be, if it's a tra- traffic calming or a bike lane, I, there's not a whole lot of other items to do to it.
Some of one of the things that I know with them too is, if, if, for those of you who remember what that road looked like before, before the last project, it's, it's a significant improvement from what was there.
Oh, right, right.
You know, some wider sidewalks by the businesses, uh, curbing gutter, getting the light poles out of the road versus in the road and, and some, um, it, I, we would make some significant strides.
Two and a half feet drop off.
Where was that job?
Thousand seven.
I took that.
I was looking here and I do not remember what it was.
It was twenty ten, I'm not sure.
No, yeah.
Sixty seven.
It was before I was on council, so, yeah.
I don't know why, I mean, I remember it being closed for a, without.
And that's the big impact, and that's gonna be the biggest impact to our businesses, is shut the power down.
Then it's gotta be in September time.
Well, and, and remember though, this time too is.
Mill and overlay will be quicker.
The mill and overlay won't be, you know, that'll be done under traffic and we don't have the utility work to do like we did last time. You know, the sidewalks will certainly be an inconvenience for, you know, just the walking public and make, uh, you know, getting in all the businesses maybe a little more inconvenient, but it shouldn't be anything to the scale of what our last project was from a inconvenience standpoint.
Yeah, so I'd say get this in front of planning and see what some of their thoughts are, let them, does that kind of get you on your meat for now?
Yeah, and, and I think just, my, my initial assumption was that the city's not real interested in anything that's gonna bring a significant cost back onto the city. You might entertain some smaller things that they have benefits, but certainly not the uh.
And I'm not, but only because I don't know what that would be, I don't, well, I can't rate. The lights now.
I'd be interested in, I mean, we, we have to do something with them.
We have to do something.
They can't be plowed, I mean, it's just kind of a weird thing.
Well, they're gonna hold them.
And by twenty, whatever, twenty twenty, they're gonna be in really bad shape.
Right. Yeah, if it comes down to, we have to replace our lights because they're damaged enough, that's the appropriate time.
Yeah. So, we're gonna have to start thinking about that for sure.
Have to budget for it.
Put some money in there, yeah.
But that's not something we need public opinion on, you know what I mean?
No.
Okay.
So I think that's, you tell me if I'm wrong maybe, I think that's enough to at least get us started.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maggie, did you find anything out then, from them, about that speed limit outside of town there, by Casey's and that crosswalk? Anything?
Yeah, they, the speed on the time, they said there, it is something that was, that didn't get done, but for whatever reason, that they're gonna be.
So it's on their list?
Yes.
It's approved and just needs to get done.
On their list.
Awesome.
So can we talk about for spring, doing like a big promotion of like, if people are using their crosswalk a lot more come spring and put up, sort of the, like, get some flashing lights? I think it's gonna get busier with the gas station right there.
I see, we talked to them about, it's outside of the twenty twenty project, so we did do.
We told them that that might be something that the city would be interested in, doing something down that intersection, make it more visible or, you know, if we're putting in bump outs, maybe an extra spot that should have a bump out, or flashing lights or something just because to the point where we, we know that that's gonna be a higher traffic area than it's been in the past with the, with this store.
But when she was here back in October, she gave us some information on flashing crosswalk signs. Did we ever find a cost out on those?
I think that was, I don't, did she give us that or was that, did I include it in the packet based on what was on the previous discussion? Cause I think we had, I think I had phoned that information.
I don't think it was sure, I think we kind of spun that on her.
You, okay.
I think we had.
But to that point, that, to, to your point, that may, if that's not part of the project, going that far down, that may be something we wanna do, it's just that intersection, we pick up the cost on that.
Yeah, I think that was doable.
And I'd like to see that done before twenty twenty, because I'm, I am concerned about.
Okay.
Well, we, they approved us putting crosswalk signs or lights in, that we had to be constantly flashing.
I don't know, I can't.
We, we, cause you have to ask, you have to submit it from MINDOT to approve. It's had to be caught, and then when we talked about it, then we talked about, is it a small sense of security?
That was the push and go.
But that, so what MINDOT, I should say, was.
And, and that's always concern is, is how much, you know.
Well, we need to do.
How much responsibility does the person crossing take on for their own safety versus giving them a sense that, that you've transferred that responsibility to somebody else?
Right.
Yeah, I've been looking.
All right, anything more on the twenty twenty, have you got enough to get started? Then let's move to the Sundance Room, fifty-one forty-five.
Um, so this resident contacted staff, both public works and admin staff about a high utility bill. Um, initially, I think the resident, probably there was an error, but then when we did some follow-up, um, and Kyle can talk too, it looks like the water stopped now, was running. This resident stated that he's not home a lot of the time because he travels a significant amount of time. Uh, and so he did mention, you know, wondered if the city had the ability to track high usage, like, if there were like alerts that were, like, on residential property meters that would alert the city if high water usage was running. I said that that's not, we don't have that ability or capability to do that.
What are they proposing?
So, he just, I guess, he, he did say that he did, that the water was used, um, the high bill is reflected, because it's not an irrigation meter, it reflects sewer, the water usage and sewer usage. So this current bill is six hundred thirty-two twenty-six. He thinks that his December bill will likely be three to four hundred dollars as well because he didn't catch it right away, um, until public works kinda helped guide him into looking, into what to look for.
There's not a lot we can do, cause it, we, he used the water and it went down to sewer.
Yeah.
Right, and so, he's, I, I said I would take it, I said there's not, I, I don't know, um, he wasn't able to come to this meeting because he is out of town. Um, I, I said I would bring it to you guys for discussion, I don't know if they're, like I said, I, I told him, there's nothing I can do, I can't, especially when the water's been used, um.
Not the opportunity to come in council meeting too, what?
Right, and he, yeah, and I did ask him if he was able to come in January, both dates, and he's not able to come to those either. So I said I would present it as best as I can and.
For me, I think he used the water and went to sewer, I don't think there's a lot we can do, you know, we've been lenient on some of the sewer stuff, but we know it hasn't gone in, into the sewer, but in this case, I think it has, I don't, I would be fine waving late fees and doing a payment plan if needed, I'm plenty fine with that.
Okay.
And also, kind of going forward, I'd like to see, when these things happen, the residents kind of propose what they would like to see versus them just.
Right, and I asked.
You know, here, here it is, what he, what he has got, I'd like to see some proposals from them on what their expectations may or may not be.
Right, and, yeah, I asked and he just said, and I can just answer them.
Yeah, I don't, I'd be fine waving late fees and doing a payment plan, but I don't, as far as I'm concerned, I don't see how we can do anything more than that.
Okay.
I don't know, a lot of people saw.
You agree?
Agreed.
All right, and certainly let him know, come in if he wants to address council, and he's certainly welcome to be up.
I mean, is there, are you open, like, if he wants to come in, like, and talk with, I mean, I've already talked to him on the phone, if he has time to talk to me again, if, if he wants a council member to be there as well, like, can I reach out to see if, like, just to have, I mean, I don't think anything's gonna change.
You know what we'd say, yeah, I, I think at this point, I'm just gonna council meeting if he wants to discuss it further.
Right.
Going on.
We've had people who have had leaky toilets before and they had to pay it.
Right, yeah.
Sucks, but.
Okay, I, that's, sounds good to me.
I duly know that there may be some lag or something in the future, as, as our systems upgrade and we get a system, I may do that, but we currently don't have, you know, I don't think we can monitor bills and see, often, some high usages and go through, start calling people, hey, it looks like you're using a lot of water, but.
Right, and it's, it, it is, like, I, I was.
You read them once, you read them once a month, right? So it's sort of you going around weekly or twice a month, you're not gonna, you're not gonna know how it's huge anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and then.
It's not like it's real time to city hall to say, oh, what boat are using water today?
Right, and it's kind of beyond our.
And it's certainly something we could do in a newsletter, check your toilet, see if it's leaking, put a little, you know, blue coloring in the top and see if it's in the, you know. We, you know, yeah, I mean.
You know?
We did something last, yeah, we did something like that.
But, okay, sounds good.
All right, uh, number five, city administrator, University of Minnesota, of course.